Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Crete County Work Session. Today is Wednesday, October the twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, nine o'clock A M. Order of business be public comment. No public can hear. Any public online would like to uh speak, type in the chat box and we'll you know, we'll unlock it. You'll see anything, so we'll move on discussion. Who's side of his best care? Melissa, you're online.
Hi there, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Um, so just a couple of updates and I'm not sure if Angela is in the room or not. Um, and if not, I'm happy to provide her update as well, but um, a few things just sort of on our horizon. So the CFAA agreement um, is still uh, in the process of being negotiated and agreed to. The counties were, or the CMHPs were asked to provide uh, what the state is calling a local plan. Um, which essentially is describing how we either currently meet or will meet all of the core service areas that are listed in the new CFAA um, agreement. They have moved from service elements to now these core service areas. And so we submitted that, um, it was due on October first, we submitted it. And so we're still waiting for feedback from that draft. Um, my understanding from counties across the state is uh, the only uh, CMHP to receive feedback thus far is Marion County. So um, they had given a timeline of turning it around in two weeks. Um, and uh, that has elapsed, so we're still waiting for that feedback from them. And then we'll sort of go back and forth. And once we have that final copy, um, I will distribute it across um, across everybody here today. Um, the CCOs are experiencing uh, significant challenges. As many of you may already know, uh, Pacific Source, which is our CCO, has pulled out of Lane County. Um, as well as uh, uh, they had sort of a small area up in the Multnomah County area. And um, so as such, we are experiencing a tremendous amount of what I would call scrutiny in terms of our um, our processes, our claims, uh, it's very difficult frankly, to get paid on a consistent basis from our CCOs. And so that's just an ongoing struggle and challenge that we are navigating uh, with communication and and various other ways of um, of just kind of working through this system. Um, so that, yeah, that's just an ongoing struggle that we're experiencing. Um, and then lastly, uh, our child and family team, uh, we are going to be moving our location from our current location uh, to a new location, which will be great in terms of getting all the kiddos um, and families kind of off our current campus, which also has our uh, best club and our burn program. And sometimes folks that are um, doing, making choices that aren't great. So uh, getting the kiddos and families to a different campus uh, will be a good move for that team. And um, and Angela can provide any updates on timelines and and various things like that. But we're excited about that move. We did find a new location and I think it'll be a good thing.
Where, where's that location?
I was gonna say, where is that?
It's uh, it's on Fourth Street. It's the old Magic Freedom that then became a church, I think.
Okay. Uh, so then what will you do with that juvenile, where you have currently juvenile? What, will you just have more of your counselors in there? Well, how will you be using it for?
I've figured that out yet.
Okay.
But I mean, we keep growing. Um, I mean, there are some additional things that we want to get going. And so I don't think it'll be bad to have another building for whatever that ends up being.
Sure.
But it will be very nice, I think. Uh, you know, as Melissa said, we've with our adult services on that building, I mean, some of our clients are, you know, still actively using, but they're psychotic. And you know, that's kind of a scary thing, I think, for young people. And so it'll be really nice to have.
And I, I, I think we missed you, but when I brought Carrie, the D A over, that was a concern of hers is that the juveniles were isolated. And this is even better. So that's great. You did have them isolated. You were fine, but that's even better. So that's really good news. Very good news.
Yeah. So it sounds like the I T and electrical um, should be done by the end of the year, beginning of January. And there are a couple of renovations that have to happen. The bathrooms are not ADA compliant, that kind of thing. Um, and the last time I asked our facilities director for an update on sort of the construction, I, I don't have that yet. But I mean, it's not going to happen until sometime in the new year, but we have to take care of the lease.
So Melissa, this is my question. So Pacific Source pulled out of Lane County.
Yes.
How are they handling their Medicaid then?
Yeah, so the state released um, about a week ago, I believe it was, um, that they have allocated all of those folks to Trillium. Um, so you know, the way that it had been was that both Trillium and and Pacific Source uh, were both the CCOs in that community. I'm not sure how they kind of split the population. Pacific Source did have the majority of folks there. Um, and so they just released that they're, rather than going through kind of a brand new RFP process, that they are just allocating those folks over to Trillium. So Trillium will be the only CCO for Lane County as of right now. Um, well, sorry, as of January of twenty six. Um, yeah.
And then I know that I heard that in the valley, that a lot of, of, of those CCOs were having severe trouble. Have you heard anything about them? Or are you guys even in the valley? Maybe you're not over there.
Yeah, so you know, of the sixteen CCOs, fourteen of the CCOs are in the red. Um, and health share is two hundred million dollars in the red. Um, so the legislative increase of, of over ten percent, while certainly helpful, um, is not nearly enough to make up the difference. And fundamentally, the business model has been broken for some time um, in terms of really getting away from the global budget and really creating this very large fee for service model um, of, you know, requiring CCOs to expand their panels so large that it got significantly away from the global budget concept. Um, and so those are all things that are really being looked at at this point. Um, they have made some uh, pretty bold statements, O H A, in terms of changes to the behavioral health directed payment. Who now will qualify for that? It is significantly lowering the number of folks that will qualify for that. Um, which is a good thing for the CMHPs because it will sort of force our new graduates to uh, start their career at a COA or at a CMHP. Whereas uh, since two thousand and sixteen and and O H A kind of making a change at that point, um, you know, new graduates were allowed to just set up shop, private practice and make over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So um, and taking, you know, very low acuity clients. Um, so it's been a mess for quite some time, honestly. I think it's really just come to a head at this point. Now that all of the COVID funding has stopped and really like the underbelly has been exposed. Um, but uh, yeah, it's a really difficult time, to be honest. Um, and I think we're, we're doing our best to navigate it. Um, Central Oregon is one of the only CCOs in the black. And that is primarily due to the capitation model that we have with Saint Charles. Um, but um, it's, it is a challenging time. And as you all may know, last week, Pacific Source laid off over three hundred employees. Um, yeah, so pretty big, pretty big things.
Okay, now I'm gonna bring this up. So I know this isn't counting for you, but I've had a lot of people in my office that are upset with your new housing proposal that you'll be bringing forth next Tuesday.
Yes.
Could you give me your side? I've heard the other side. I'd like to hear best care's side. And I don't know if Angela's better or you, but just, I feel we need to have both sides out there.
Sure, Melissa's probably better to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, here's, here's the thing, right? We have individuals in every community that suffer from severe and persistent mental illness. And these are individuals that ha- mo- most of them have grown up in Crete County, have grown up in Primeville and are currently frankly unhoused, right? And so the idea of creating an environment where they can live, um, they have to engage in treatment. Um, and there is the ability to monitor, support, provide wraparound services to them is really the idea of mental health housing. Um, and so while, yes, I mean, you have individuals that do and say things that make other people uncomfortable, absolutely. What's important to remember is that the majority of people with severe and persistent mental illness are not dangerous. They are more likely to be a victim of a crime than to commit a crime themselves. Um, and so we are really just trying to support the population that already lives here, that is already unhoused. Um, and to provide them a supportive environment where they're more likely to be successful than the current situation that they're in. Um, these housing um, homes exist throughout the state in every single community. Jefferson County has one that's going quite well, um, and the community has really embraced the idea that these are our community members and we have a responsibility to take care of them. Um, rather than just hope they either go away or move somewhere else. Um, and so that's really our goal, um, is to support folks in a way that when someone has a warm place to stay, the likelihood that their symptoms will improve, the likelihood that they will engage in treatment goes up, um, and that we're not just always using emergency services to deal with uh, the reality of what these people experience.
Is that the location that's on ninety seven?
Yes.
Oh, I have not heard positive things from the people in Madras.
That's why I wanted to hear there's your side.
Well, not just Crete County, but the people in Madras are not a fan of that because they said there's always people hanging out outside of there. And uh, causing problems, traffic and uh, yeah, that's, that's concerning. Because is it gonna be, is it gonna be a um, are there gonna be requirements that they're not doing drugs and alcohol at the facility or during the day?
That will be part of the requirement, absolutely. Um, and right, I mean, if I'm being just really frank, I mean, the reality is they, people will probably still do it on some level, even though they're being told and monitored that they're not allowed to. And so when that happens, right, we have a responsibility to help manage that. And um, and if, you know, a person continues to not be able to follow the rules, then we have decisions to make in terms of whether they can stay there. You know, when I, I mean, when I look at the work that um, is done throughout the state, I mean, these are always going to be challenging um, folks in terms of their ability to comply with what's being asked of them, right? The majority of people that have severe and persistent mental illness have something called anosignosia, which is the brain's inability to recognize that it's sick. And so they don't understand and accept that they have a mental illness, right? So just because we're asking them to do something doesn't mean that they're going to comply. But it also doesn't mean that we don't continue to try to help um, from our perspective.
So, so this housing won't be like your silver living house where you have to be nine over before you're allowed in, I don't.
No, well, and the silver house is actually, it's thirty days, not ninety days.
I don't, sorry, but anyway, but yeah.
But at least they got, they got a little skin in the game.
But it won't have any requirement them like that. So you're bringing them actually, basically are, they're, they're homeless or unhoused, as you say.
Yeah.
And bring them in there and then that is at the point where you would start working with substances.
Well, chances are with those people who are already working to try to address the substance use. But I mean, it's really challenging to address that when people's basic needs aren't, aren't met, right? So they don't have a place to live. They have unstable, you know, uh, access to food. Um, it doesn't mean that we're gonna put actively using, I mean, I don't want anyone to think that the purpose of this is to put actively using mentally ill people into the housing. The primary thing needs to be that they have severe and persistent mental illness and some of them may or may not be using. Um, but the goal is not that they would stay in that house and continue to be actively using.
And how long is, is, is the occupancy? Are you, so when they come in, are you trying to get them a job? Or their inability, or are they gonna be there forever? How, how does that work? How do you transition people through there? Where do they go from there, I guess?
Um, so we haven't really talked about what the timeline looks like, but I mean, I imagine that it could be long term. We do have a supported employment program that works with folks. Now, some of these people are gonna be on disability and unable to work.
So they'll be there for, basically forever, is what you're saying.
Do you suppose it could be like a forever thing, Melissa?
Yeah, I mean, some, some mental health housing is considered permanent housing. I would say for the most part, you know, because um, because some of these folks are just not going to be able to work and their disability will be the reality of their, the rest of their life. Um, you know, permanent housing is a possibility for them. It's, it is less common for that to be the case throughout the state. I mean, we do try to transition folks to permanent housing, also realizing that some communities have more options than others for that. So um, so I think that that's, that's still something I think we have to consider. Um, but I would say like at a minimum, most people typically live in mental health housing for, you know, two years before they transition somewhere else, if they do transition.
And then my other question would be, are these people, are their families there? Because you know how we're talking about the separation of juveniles from the adults? Would there be people that have their family there and how would you handle juvenile being next to someone that maybe wasn't?
Yeah, this would, this would be adult only, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, it's like a little tiny home, so I don't think you'd really be able to have.
Okay, I just, I mean, but curiosity, because there could be people with a family. They would, you would have to try to accommodate them in another place.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then one of the questions that they're concerned about is because this is across the street, is people, would they be crossing the Madras Highway to go to the clubhouse? Because the clubhouse is a drop in and you have all those facilities that I've seen there. Are you worried about that? Because you do have a highway there and there is no crosswalks.
Um, well, there's people who cross the road every day to come to us.
I, I, I get that. I know, I'm not, I'm talking about.
But making it more people isn't gonna be a positive.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking. I get it that people are gonna, I, I would walk across that street. But I'm just saying theoretically, this is a highway. People are going forty miles an hour, whatever the speed limit is. Is there any accommodation or thinking about, about them wanting to pop into the clubhouse?
No, I mean, most of the people who live at the shelter come to our clubhouse. Um, I mean, we work with people who live in the neighborhood across the street, who cross the street. Um, I mean, we have plenty of people who come to our site right now that, you know.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think it's, we're open to like, I mean, i- if realistically putting a crosswalk in there is something that we need to look at. I mean, we, we could, but um, I, you know, just because a person has a severe mental illness doesn't mean they're not capable of safely crossing the road. So I would say, yeah.
But it's um, six units, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So it's not like we're adding twenty people?
Okay.
So kind of to Suzie's question, um, there's like a very similar sized piece of property on your property.
Yes.
Would, I think, lead, lead itself to like a lot more ability to check in on those people and watch them and keep them on the campus and not have them around town. Uh, you know, I've heard a lot of people would prefer to see it on the campus versus off campus, even though it's close to campus.
Sure.
Look into that at all?
Yeah, I mean, those are some things that we've talked about. I mean, we are currently renting where we are. And so one of the things that has come up is, let's say that we build the, the little mini home campus on that bigger campus. And then let's say we move and we're no longer at that campus. There is, I mean, there has to be like an easement, um, because there would still need to be able to be access to that housing. Because we would own that housing, but we don't own where you are.
Okay, I didn't know that. That's why you have on the, on the G I S, you have best care on that point, six acres. And then I think it's the, the C or something. There, it's a different term. I don't know. I can't remember exactly. Okay.
Have you guys looked into having requirements of no negative interactions with police in the community or community members? As one of the reasons why you could be removed from the housing?
I mean, I, we're all, ultimately, we're gonna create sort of a whole list of what our expectations are. I think, I think that sometimes what happens when people think, like, there's more severely mentally ill people in the community than I think some people re- realize. And most of those people are not interacting negatively with people and are not using drugs and are in fact quite isolated and, and don't want to interact with people. I think that sometimes when we have these discussions, people think of sort of the handful of people that I think the majority of the community knows because they see them walking on the streets. Um, and, but that's not the majority of the severely mentally ill people that we work with.
Absolutely.
That is certainly a handful of them, um, but that's not the norm.
Yeah, I mean, one in twenty-five people have a severe and persistent mental illness. I mean, that's a lot. One in five people have a mental illness in their lifetime, some diagnosis, right? So I mean, the idea that there are not many people already living in the community that are not rising to anybody's radar, um, is, is just not true. I mean, like Angela said. So um, I think the land, like, we have certainly talked about the idea of a land swap. We have certainly talked about the idea of trying to accommodate it, just like Angelo was saying, on the campus. Um, so I mean, at the end of the day, right, like, the last thing that we want is to create something where for the folks that we're trying to stabilize, that they're frankly being harassed by their neighbors because the neighbors don't want them there and vice versa, right? Like, that's the last thing that we want and yet we still have a responsibility to help individuals suffering from a mental illness. Um, and so if we can find a way to find that happy medium and, and do it, we certainly are open to that.
Wouldn't it be better to kind of come up with the parameters before you move forward with the project? So the community knows what kind of requirements and, you know, base level of, of expectations for those people are? Wouldn't that be an easier thing to explain to people before you just say, we're gonna put a bunch of people in housing next to you and we'll figure out later what those requirements can be?
I mean, we certainly can. I mean, like I said, these homes exist all over the state. And so those requirements are really already created. Um, and uh, so if it would be helpful for the community for us to write them down and to pass them around, I mean, we certainly can do that. I mean, I also realize that we could write something that, you know, we feel like is a really solid plan and folks still may not feel comfortable with it. So um, but if, if it would be helpful to do that, w- we certainly can.
Well.
I also think it might be helpful. I think when some folks think about severe and persistent mental illness, they think about like the folks walking around talking to themselves and, you know, scary.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of diagnoses that fall under that. So yes, there's the schizos, schizophrenia, schizoaffective. But there's also bipolar disorder. I guarantee there's people in this room probably who know people with bipolar, major depressive disorder, borderline personality disorder. I mean, there's multiple diagnoses that fall under that category. And so it's not just sort of, I think, this handful of people, like I said before, that, that are sort of the ones that, that people are concerned about. There's a lot of other people who fall into that category.
Yeah, I just wanna go back to something Melissa said a minute ago, that even if you do all this, the people of Crete County won't like, still won't like it. But I really think you need to look at that because that's who you're serving is the people of Crete County. I mean, you're
Sure.
of that. But I mean, if you come up with a plan and it's still extremely negative in our community, I think you need to put a lot of weight in that and, and understand that maybe that doesn't fit for our community.
And I think one of the other things, Melissa, that disturbs me, you're in a commercial zone. So now you have a business on either side of this. And again, like what Seth is saying, you have, let's say you have a thriving business and now you do have people that are disturbing those two commercial things. Because you are, you're not going into a residential zone. You're going into a zoning that really is not.
Sure.
So I, I guess, what other locations did you look at before you decided to go into something that was commercial?
Yeah, um, I wouldn't be able to speak to that because this all happened before I started. Um, but I think, you know, as you can imagine, looking at a home in the middle of a like a tracked community, um, isn't super welcomed, right? Um.
Stuck in a, in a bad situation, but again, you're in a commercial.
Yeah.
And now you have a business on the right and someone else has a business on the left and you have this there. Are you going to fence this, this thing? Is it gonna be fenced? Are they gonna be, I mean, not, not saying chain link or I'm not talking a prison fencing, but will there be fencing on either side because of the possibility of there being two businesses on either side?
I think there is in the plan, isn't there?
I looked, I looked at the submission, uh, it's been whenever you guys first went before planning and I kind of, and I believe it was nine people is what I thought. But I could be wrong. It's been a while.
No, I'm pretty sure it's six. I mean, I can get some clarity.
No, and that's a, I, I can look at it.
That has more of like an office, um, and I think that's where the showers or the walk through or something like that would be.
Okay, so that's gonna kind of be your clubhouse there, actually.
Not a, not a clubhouse, but like a supplemental, um, because they're gonna have their little tiny house area. And then, but we want to be able to have staff that are able to be there for them to access.
And so will the staff be there daily or, or is the staff there by appointment? I have an appointment Tuesday at two. How is the staff gonna be there on that site?
Um, I believe that they're probably gonna be there all day, but I mean, it's not a twenty-four seven.
No, I know that, but you would have staff there, okay?
Yes.
I appreciate how, I mean, like I said, I appreciate you having this dialogue with us.
Sure.
Even though it is a city issue, it's been, I've had a lot of people come to me. And so I, I wanna thank you very much for having this discussion.
Absolutely, yeah. And, you know, happy to continue the discussion. I mean, I think at the end of the day for us, we are trying to serve the people of the community and realizing that in the attempt to do so, just like really anything in life, you can never make everybody happy. And so do you try to um, do the right thing and serve folks that are the most vulnerable? Um, when that's what we're being asked to do by O H A. Um, and that's really what we're attempting to do. So happy to continue the dialogue for sure.
So are, when people are staying there, are they gonna require to be working with best care and be in mental health services?
Yes.
And then how do people, are people, are you able to bring people in from outside the community to give them? Or is it strictly for existing Crete County residents?
Strictly for existing Crete County residents.
Right, well, I, I'm pretty concerned about this and I'd really like to see a really solid plan from you guys, especially of having barriers to entry. And having people specifically required to have some skin in the game before they're able to be part of this process. And continue, you know, in a, in a plan of like guidelines of how long they're allowed to stay with negative interactions with police or, um, you know, coming back intoxicated or different, different things like that. Because I see the one in Redmond, it looks super sketchy to me, right there.
Redmond?
I see people rolling in there, you know, weaving back and forth on their bicyclists, bicycles on the highway and.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a mental health housing in Redmond, so I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Tiny houses. No, the tiny houses.
Oh, by the airport there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, I think.
That's a church, that is a.
That's, that's done by, that's done by the city.
Oh, I thought that was the, where the church was, because the church has one too.
No. And also maybe some kind of uh, guarantees that the, the, the rules will stick and it doesn't get to a point where, oh, we're not able to fill it with these stringent rules, so we're gonna loosen the rules and it's gonna become something like it is out in Redmond, like some kind of a deed restriction or something where it doesn't turn into like an unfettered homeless shelter like the, with someone across the street, the.
Um.
Uh.
The shelter across the street?
Yeah, what's that called?
Is that the redemption house?
Redemption, because I'm very unhappy with that. I've heard from business owners that they let them sit there and smoke marijuana on the porch and just kind of float around. They are constantly concerned about their vehicles being parked near there. And so we don't need to add anything similar to that whatsoever.
Well, just to um, give you, you know, kind of some additional information, we already have a housing program that works with severe and persistent mental illness, uh, folks with that diagnosis. Um, and it's where uh, we have so many sort of slots where we can help individuals pay. Um, and it's where uh we have so many sort of slots where we can help individuals pay rent. Who meet certain qualifications. And to be on that program, like for example, most of the people on that program. Don't use drugs. Every now and then somebody does, they they start acting a little different. We do a random UA or they're positive for something. One of the conditions of them remaining on that program is now you need to enroll in S U D services. And follow, you know, whatever the recommendations are. But we don't keep people on that program indefinitely who are not doing what it is that we're recommending. Because ultimately, that's not helpful either. That's just enabling somebody.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
But there is, you know, we've had some people on that program, we took over as the CMHP in December twenty nineteen. We have some people on that program who've been on that program since the, since day one. And they still are, and they don't use, like, I'm thinking of a couple of these people, like, they literally don't leave their house, except to come see us or we're going to see them. Um, because they're, you know, just too paranoid to be in the community. They're not people who are interacting with law enforcement negatively. Or their neighbors, because they don't want to know their neighbors.
Yeah.
Um, and so these are people who are living in apartments in this towns or homes in this, you know, in these towns.
In front.
Our housing coordinator works with the property management companies and we get these people placed. Now, not everybody can get placed because backgrounds keep people sometimes from getting housed. Um, but we have strong relationships with some of the property management, you know, companies here who know. We're coming and we're doing house inspections with these people. Like, it's not just sort of this free for all that, like, we don't go, you know. I mean, our people are actively going to their homes, they're helping them, you know, keep it clean. We're teaching people how to be good neighbors. I mean, there's lots of different components to it. Um.
Yeah, now I see all those things as very positive things. I'm just very concerned about a slippery slope where we end up. With something similar to Mattress, because I've driven by it and there's a bunch of people that are sitting there with a bunch of bags sitting right on the curb.
I don't know anything about the Mattress. Is that us? Do we have housing in Mattress?
Yeah, we have, um, we have our uh sober housing out in Mattress. Um, the program or the uh project to build mental health housing um hasn't begun yet, but we do have sober housing. And so I just wanna, again, I just wanna like distinguish between the two. When I hear s- um statements like that people need to have a buy-in. So, I mean, when someone has a severe mental illness, that's, that is what we are using as the qualifier for this housing. We are not looking at, is this person someone that's struggling with addiction? Now, co-occurring disorders happen all the time. When somebody has a mental illness. They can at times use substances to manage their symptoms. Um, but this is not a sober housing, this is for mental health. And so the buy-in is really their ability to engage with us in their mental health treatment. That is the requirement. If someone is unwilling to do that, they will not be in this home.
But again, to Seth's point, you have people out in the community, they're in an apartment complex or a home. What you're doing here is congregating.
Yeah.
That's the difference between the two examples of Seth's. Basically, the single people that are out there and then now you have a congregation and that's, that's where you enter into where I believe Seth was addressing.
Sure. And yeah, I mean, certainly a congregation of six people is a congregation, absolutely. Um, but I think our ability to um continue to manage in the way that we are. When folks are living, you know, here, there and independently, um will be the same. The requirements will be the same, our ability to be there every day, it will be the same. Um, and, you know, because of just the sheer nature of some of these diagnoses, the. Being wrapped around by our services is necessary to help keep people stable. And so because we work so closely with these folks, we can see very subtle changes in their behaviors or in their symptoms. And at that point, then we engage in a different way um to try to reduce their use of any kind of emergency services. So, I mean, it is a very intensive, supportive, wraparound uh treatment that these folks get. Um, and is that gonna guarantee that the police are never ever gonna be called? No, I can never say that. Um, and if that is what the community is is expecting or needing. Like, we just can't ever say that they will never be there. Um, but what we can say is that we work hard every day to ensure that that doesn't happen. And when it does happen, we provide a ton of wraparound supports to ensure that it doesn't, A. Affect the other people that are there and B, that we try to stabilize that person as quickly as possible.
Yeah, again, I just think putting in parameters of, you know, maybe it's not one, but maybe it's two or three. Or some kind of a system where you're not stuck with this person that's a a troublemaker, that's gonna screw up the whole thing for everybody else.
Sure, absolutely.
I do wanna thank you again. I'm, I, uh, Will and I went to Association of Counties, County College. And one of the things is that the county is responsible for mental health. And so I was kind of one of the ones that prompted you to come, and I wanna thank you, Melissa, and you, Angela. Because I think our communication, we need to keep it up. I really like the reports. I I, and I just wanna thank you very, very much for coming today and doing this. And I hope we're, we're making this a regular scheduled thing, because I think we need to do that.
Absolutely. We're happy to be here and thank you for having us.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Next on the agenda, regional fire specialists, wildfire program.
Yes. I'm not sure, my, I have a laptop, I'm signed in, I could share screen?
I'm gonna pull up your.
Okay, thank you.
Well, uh, good morning. Thanks for having me at this work session. My name's Ariel Cowan. I work for Oregon State University Extension. As your regional fire specialist. Um, we can. And um, just a little background, um, I, uh, my start of uh. In the world of fire was uh more studying uh effects of fire on soils and how that um impacts forest recovery. But I also spent a lot of time uh working for, we put my forestry as a monitoring specialist and a firefighter. And have um, my time serving Crete County goes back to then as well. Uh, where I've spent time on fires around Crete County where I've, I've melted my boots. I've, I've, I've um been out uh all through the night uh witnessing a dozer almost rollover on the side of Risen Mountain. Um, and I felt like I've seen a lot of things that um brought, brought me into this passion of. Trying to speak with communities about how they can be more prepared for wildfires. Um, so, I'm gonna put you on the next slide here. Um, so joining OSU Extension has been really great. I'm sure you've heard from a lot of the other folks who work in Extension uh in Crete County. That um, a lot of what we do is sharing research-based knowledge, uh, working with all Oregonians. And trying to address their concerns, their needs, um, and partnering to bring about more healthy, prosperous future for this place. Um, then the next one. And so the fire program, I think a lot of people are not as familiar with the fire program. Uh, I think more so people are familiar with programs like four H or Master Gardener, things like that, I have a printer. Um, but the fire program started in twenty twenty as a result, um, well, actually even before. I, the day I started was when the twenty twenty fires were breaking out um across Oregon. And really, our goals here are trying to work with communities, trying to uh help them to be more fire-adapted. And um also considering these um uh landscapes to be more fire-adapted as well, not just the communities. So, I mean, these are, these sound like really lofty goals. We need to, you know, have a vision of where we wanna go. And it's really in collaboration with others that we do this work. Um, um, trying to get to those resilient uh communities. Um, trying to bring about a, a change in the culture of how we see fires and how we um not only respond to them, but we prepare for them. And we, how we can recover after them. And um also that the systems, ecosystems around here certainly are Jingle Woodlands, how um we can manage them to, you know. Try to engage in this fire uh issue, this challenging fire issue that we have today. Uh, next slide. So, uh, our fire program, we have different regions across the state. So my region includes uh six different counties and Prairie Tribes Warm Springs. I'm, I'm not a big chunk in the center there.
You got a lot of country there.
I do, so I'm moving around a lot. Um, and um, it's really, yeah. I I try to make sure that I'm spending time in Crete County and uh engaging in activities in, in and around Primal for sure. Um, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so a lot of the work I do is related to outreach and education. Um, and also trying to engage people in conversations on landscape scale projects. Uh, because a lot of the work that's done on uh wildfire mitigation can be more like a Swiss cheese approach. Where, you know, there's like here and there, um, some fuel, reducing of fuels uh around the county, but how do we connect the dots? Um, so I'm always trying to engage with our partners on that conversation. And so, yeah, I I work a lot with the Crete County Fire and Rescue, um, the Central Oregon Fire Prevention Co-op. Um, and uh with Oregon State Fire Marshal and Oregon Department of Forestry, among many other entities that I get to work with. Um, another one that I didn't list there is uh awesome that there is this Central Oregon Wildfire Workforce Partnership. That's uh part of, it's the Youth Conservation Corps from Heart of Oregon. They've been fantastic to work with and they're interested in doing a lot of the work and bring those youth crews uh around the county. Um, to help people who can't get some of that field work done on their properties by these signs. I'll leave you to the next one. So obviously, we're no stranger to fire um in this county. Um, I'm not gonna, I, at one point, I was gonna open up the map so we can actually see the different fires that. This is fire history over the last ten years. And um obviously, what comes to mind is several fires from this year, like the Highland Fire. Um, but if this is going to be our reality, then how do we approach it? What do we do with that? And I, I will say that it's, um, we, we could definitely think of this, okay, this is a fire problem that's coming from. Uh, outside of town and on some, so folks will point to public lands. But now we're seeing a lot more evidence of fires coming from within town. Um, you know, whether it be someone's, uh, you know, uh, had a, a pile that was burning and then it kicked up again a few days later. Um, that's actually the number one cause of uh fires uh starting in the state of Oregon. And so if we can kind of flip that around and not think of it so much as a fire problem, but more of a structure ignition problem. Like the houses are igniting in the first place, then that's really where we can approach a lot of the education and outreach, how we can encourage. Landowners, homeowners themselves, what they can do to feel more empowered uh to be prepared for these wildfires. We go to the next slide. Um, so there are so many different groups, organizations working on trying to create, create more fire-adapted communities. Um, here where we live and so they're just, everybody's working at it from different angles. There's people who are working on safety and evacuation, that's a big piece. Um, all of these are really important. Recovery after fire, um, important for all of you, the policy and plans um uh for uh wildfire mitigation. And uh for a lot of work I do is more on the partnerships and community engagement. And speaking to people on resident mitigation, speaking to homeowners, landowners themselves, on what they can do. Um, to be more prepared for these situations. Um, so I don't focus as much on the prevention side, but I think a lot of people, who we talk to people about how we can reduce fires from starting in the first place. I just wanna point out, there is so many pieces to this pie, yeah.
Do you guys do any kind of, I don't know, conversations with the federal government to start managing our force better?
Yeah, yes. I mean, uh, we are, we partner with them a lot and um engage with them on. Uh, some of the projects that they're working on. And for them, they really want to see the collaboration of, if they're working out there, then who's working with the communities themselves? So that's how we can team up, um, where I'm really more focusing on engaging with people with their own property, their own homes around here. While they're doing all that work out there. But yeah, like I was saying, the, try, you know, try to fill in the, the gaps where the treatments have been done, not only on federal lands, but also private lands. Um, because fire doesn't know ownership boundaries. It's not like fire gets to the edge of federal property and says, oh, I'm done. You know, the fire will go through all, you know, whatever is private property or federal property. So how can we connect the dots on those treatments? Is that a conversation we can have?
I would only, I would just argue that public land or private land is usually much better, better managed and much less fuel load than federal lands.
Uh, well, we're just trying to approach us, uh, from what I do is working with a lot more of the private landowners. And then connecting with, oh, is there public land that is right adjacent? Oh, maybe we can utilize, um, for example, there's the wide amendment where they do uh some kind of a treatment. Like a prescribed burn that's right next to public land, like maybe both properties can take advantage of that. Um, yeah, we have conversations like that. Oh, we go to the next slide. So, um, as I was saying, I've worked on a lot of partnership and community side of things. And um, where, what do I contribute from, you know, a different perspective, different angle? Um, I, because I'm connected with the university, um, really we have been tapping into information on. How to reach people best, like uh how adults learn, how do we retain information? What actually empowers us to take action? Um, because, you know, we could be handing out information, like flyers, one-pagers about, oh, this is what you could do on your property. And then people will take that and just take it home and throw it in the trash. So we're trying to tap into more, okay, you know, like. If we're meeting with people out in woods, we talk about, oh, here are some scenarios and how can we manage this property for all the different values? Um, and making sure we're reducing the fuels that if fire comes in, we're not losing all of the values of that property. Um, so engaging with people, getting them outside, um, but also uh getting them together in workshops. And uh having them get into groups and think through and discuss of how to approach uh these situations. These are different scenarios and they all bring their own um examples. And that is, you know, just a piece of how we try to engage with people where they're going to retain information. And then create kind of a cultural change where they're uh then encouraged to communicate with their neighbors. Their family, their friends, um, you know, everybody else who they work with. Cause really then they become the spark clubs and others are more likely to listen to that information than sometimes from myself. Or even sometimes from a partner who, for example, works for a government entity, but not having the ability to listen to that. So really, we're trying to get out to the community and find who those spark clubs are and um uh try to encourage more of that take action approach. So, uh, some of those things that we've engaged on already, um, I'm just happy to see the completion. Uh, of the uh community, the Crete County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, um, which uh was published earlier this year. And uh so I contributed to that. Um, I mentioned workshops. One of our um biggest workshops has been these wildfire home protection strategies workshops. Uh, we've got some pictures here where we were, um, examples of when we were at Jennifer Canyon doing one a couple of years ago. Uh, where uh we've done one in Pineville, um, we did one out of Versada recently. And there's a component of that workshop where people get outside, walk around a home or a neighborhood and talk about, okay, well, what are things that we can do? Um, what are some recommendations on not only the um landscaping part, the defensive space, but also home gardening, um, you know, the building materials? Uh, we've had a series of wildfire awareness fairs. Um, earlier this year, there was one at Schreger Park. Um, in town. And uh also, we have a very popular fire-resistant plan in the home landscapes. So I, I contribute to the update on that publication. That's been really popular because people want suggestions on, okay, I plant around my home. They want it to look beautiful, like I said, Wednesday, and people care also about privacy. But we don't want them to put extremely harmful plants right next to their home, uh, because that is creating an issue. Uh, so we have that publication that's been really popular and we're planning to do more pushing on the, the other side. So what's next? Uh, one or another. So what's next? Uh, one or another workshop in Jennifer Canyon. Um, understandably, you know, what's happened this year. Uh, and so we're looking at that early next year. And we want it to be there, so we might utilize the trap again for that location. Last time that was pretty good. Um, and it was really great working with the pastor there. Um, we wanted to do some more promotion of fire resistance plant guides, uh, connecting with nurseries. Maybe they can have tags that say which plants are fire, more fire resistant, um, and they can share more information. Um, we also, going back to the workshop, we offer continuing education credits to landscapers and builders. Um, so that is a way to entice them to join and, and learn about it. If they're going around and doing this work on people's properties, shouldn't they have that knowledge as well? Um, yeah, that, that's one we're engaging with them. Um, and we're also going to be turning up some master gardeners because that's a popular program. So they can also get out there and, uh, work with a lot of people beyond what I can do. Um, and then we're going to get back into the wildfire preparedness fairs again. Um, so what we're seeing is there's, we had great turnout, but. We're really trying to figure out how we can. Advertise better, market better, these, these preparedness fairs. And so I'm curious from all of you, how we can get people to come to these fairs? Or maybe there's other events that are already happening that we should join up with? Like, is there some event in the spring that a lot of people find to be worthwhile and it's popular? And we can join up with them in order to share a lot of this information? Um, and, and otherwise, I, I really would like to see what, what are you noticing? Um, for needs in wildfire education around this county?
So, sorry, I did have one question. Do, you know, since the summer and the wildfire, it's been around, especially up in the canyon area and the Butch Coast. Have you seen an uptake in people that have reached out and want this information? They want your help? And, and if so have, and then have we seen, we seen any change? Have we seen them make their, their houses and areas, you know, more, um, safer or fire wise there?
Yeah, well, I, I would say, um. Over the last few years, a lot of the great work that. Cook County Fire Rescue has done and Oregon State Fire Marshal, working with them. Um, I do think that there has been an impact where, um, some of the examples, I, I'm afraid the Highland Fire would have been worse. If some people didn't have the, the defensible space that they had. So I do see some promising results there, but how do we then tell that story to? Share that with those who don't have the defensible space? Um, and you're, you have a very, very good question of, are people hungry for this information? Have they been reaching out? Um, not in particular around here. Um, I've seen that in a lot of other parts of my region, but not as much here. And maybe it's because in the first place they don't have the workshop access. So we're really trying to find a way, like I was saying earlier, find those spark plugs, like people who are already engaged with the community. And they, people trust them, that they can share out some of this, uh, these resources and opportunities. Um, but yeah, otherwise I'm not hearing a ton of requests. I would like to see more, but I also can't force the topic.
Do, yeah, I would, so would too, you know, and I, I, I mean, generally when something tragic happens. It makes people more aware of problems and more interested to protect themselves and their surroundings. So I don't know how you get people more involved. I mean, if you almost get burnt out, you would think that would. Will encourage people to be more aware and, you know, draw some help, because we offer the help we offer. You know, the manpower in a lot of cases to help them.
Right, yeah, well, um, I, I think sometimes it's really just that disconnect of not even knowing that there's great money out there. To help them get the work done, or the Youth Conservation Corps that I was talking about that. Um, Central Oregon Wildfire Workforce Partnership can come out and assist people. So if people don't know that it's happening, that, that those are available to them, maybe then they're just, you know, not as interested. Um, but this is why we're thinking of doing it at Jennifer Canyon, work it out again. Because of what happened, that maybe it is, you know, strike while the iron's hot. Um, and even though I haven't had a ton of requests for that, um, the pastor seems to think it's a good idea, that we should try again.
Do you, so do you guys provide funding or manpower to actually firewise somebody's property?
We don't ourselves. I am just that one person in that good region, but that's why I collaborate with people.
But you have the ability to share resources with these people.
Yes.
If I were you, I would put an ad in the roundup and say that we have, however you want to word it, but we have. So I've heard from a lot of older people in Jennifer Canyon that said, we'd like to firewise our property. But we, my husband and I are, you know, we're not, we don't have the energy or we just can't get out there and do it. And I think if you put something in the roundup and, and lead with that and say, you know, we have. I, I don't know how you want to say it, so you're not overpromising and then if they get there and you don't have it there, it'd be best. But put in something about how we have, uh, resources to either get you money or, or manpower to clean up your property. I think you'll have a, a really good showing and I think the roundup would be a really good place. It's very good. And the, the person who runs it's also very community minded. They might even do it for you for free to, to put a, put a bin there. And, uh, I would maybe even put a phone number and send, and a website, but you know, give something where people can reach out to you. And the time and date, I, I, I think that's what I'm hearing a lot of people. They're overwhelmed because they want, they're concerned. They're scared, but they don't really see any opportunity to get help. It, it will actually help them. It's just somebody telling them they need to do it again.
Yeah, yeah, um, that's a great suggestion. We have not advertised our workshops and roundup. And maybe when we do advertise the workshop, we put in and learn about funding, resources or something, you know. We would work on the language of that, um, because it sounds like if they can hear, oh, maybe there's some. Money out there that can help them get the work done, that would encourage them to show up to.
Or man, I think the, the manpower is even better. If you've got a group of people that you can say, you know, we'll connect you with people that can come. And, and, you know, put you in a position where you're safer, you and your family are safer. I, I think that's a very powerful message, a lot more powerful than just you need to cut trees in your backyard.
Yes. Yeah, no, that's great. I appreciate that suggestion. Yeah, and, and you know, there's also.
No, I think as soon as you could do something in Jennifer Canyon, I think the irony is fine, and I think they would really appreciate it. And I do think. That, that's a good idea for stuff, because I, I, a lot of people were concerned, well, I came here to the board, you know, to ask for help. With removal of the juniper trees and stuff, so now's the time, so the sooner you can do that, the better it would be.
Yeah, we were trying to think, oh, we're getting close to the holidays, we're not getting too close to that, but.
Maybe after the first of the year when there's not, yeah.
I think so, because we also have a way of doing these workshops where it can be, you know, if the weather's not great, we can still do everything inside. Um, we have people break out into groups and give them, have you do a mock home assessment, just with logos of different properties? And people get into it.
Sure.
Um, so, yeah, I appreciate that feedback of just trying to do it as soon as possible.
And with insurance, the way it is right now, and fire being such a big thing, the, the faster and the better that they can do their home. The more that it will help them on that, on that part right there.
And again, maybe this is the season to be cutting these trees where the fire danger's low.
Yeah.
And maybe push a lot of that because, you know, some of the fires were started by people that were trying to clear their, their property. A complete long time of the year.
Yeah.
But don't, don't give up. This is a problem that's been going on for a very long time. And there have been programs and money available for a very long time. And there has been advertisements and notifications and things on television, even after the fire, that, you know, that. That these resources are available. It's gonna be more like you're gonna have to get a group of people together and do the services and, and.
As it.
You go to their house, yeah, and say, hey, here. That we can do this, you want this done?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's a wicked problem and we just need to keep at it. Um, but yeah, I, I appreciate input on that. Um, and if you end up seeing other needs, if there's a next one, if, if you have any other ideas or thoughts or. For example, any spring events that, um, we could try to join up with for the fair? Um, that already gets good attendance, um, it's, I mean.
We can also, they, both PLA one and two have bulletin boards. I think it would be worth putting something on there. Those are pretty big subdivisions in Jennifer Canyon, in kind of the road danger area.
That's great. We have not posted on our community boards before. Yeah, and we're trying to reach people multiple avenues, not expecting it on a. Find out on a website, we're trying to, you know, post flyers around town, making them see some of them. Um, and we're just gonna keep, turn it first that way. Yeah.
Well, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please reach out if you have any more thoughts.
Sure.
I must be allergic to you, Brian.
Sure. Okay, uh, CJC Grant, Erin.
Not Erin, not Erin.
You don't have a vest like Erin, so.
I don't. That's okay, though. Probably need one.
I'd still bet on her.
Uh, mine is very simple. This has already been presented back in April. I just need a signature to collect funds. It's, uh, this is, um, the grant is about four hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, it funds our mental health position, um, with PMP, half of the PO, and this one has half of the DA, D A.
So my question, my question would be, I've read everything and whatever, and it's good. Is this something we put on the consent agenda or do we need to make a motion now and sign it right now? Sir, that's my question.
Time sensitive, I guess.
So, why do you have to be that?
Well, I, if Erin was here, he could tell you. He's always like right on the edge of, uh, of the things.
So then basically, I want to make a motion that we sign on the CJC grant for Justice Reinvestment Program for twenty-five dash twenty-seven budget year.
Most have been made, second, any discussion? All PBCI.
Hi.
Perfect eye. Look, look at how quick. And you didn't even need that vest.
No, not right, not today, not this time.
All right. That's one less thing for you on the consent agenda, Brianna. See, I'm saving you typing.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day. Thanks for your time.
You.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Yep.
Brad?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm here today to ask to go forward with purchase of four new Western Star dump trucks. Um, they're re- replacing four of our trucks out of our fleet. Uh, done a lot of research. And these are gonna be leased for seven years and purchased outright, kept for the seven years. Uh, giving you guys, uh, the packet. I kind of, I just received most of the information yesterday, so it's kind of late coming in. Email correspondence with the leasing company. Um, these trucks are, uh. Uh, bigger trucks are coming, two of them are coming with brand new, uh, high capacity Sanders to do some of our bigger areas. I've viewed the highway and Millican Road, so we don't have to come back and forth to the sender piles. And they'll be equipped with the two extended plows that we purchased last year to keep the trucks from going back and forth down the road. To clear the snow and ice. Um, also, I did, uh, scope out the four axles for higher capacity. To haul more material. What we're doing is like stockpiling of better projects that rock in roads, so they'll be higher capacity vehicles. Um, the build on these will be about a hundred days, so that we should have them. Uh, if we go forward, uh, about February in our grasp. So, uh, today I'm asking to use, for, to go forward for the funding of this.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
The biggest thing is you check with finance and they'll.
Yes, Christina.
Yes.
I looked over the lease, Christina, you on her? She's not on there, uh, she's had a point today. Uh, did check with, uh, finance on the leasing. Uh, it actually come in less than what I was predicting. So the lease on these are, uh, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, hundred. Forty-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars a year, spread out over seven years. Um, this just gets our equipment we need. We're gonna replace, like I said, we're gonna replace four trucks. Which need to be replaced because they are starting to show some serious wear and tear.
So the trucks are replacing, do they have piles on them also?
They do. We've been utilizing them plows on these three trucks, so.
So we'll go with the truck if you get rid of it. The airport's looking for a truck, as you all know.
Yeah, uh, no, they won't go with them, so. Uh, when we get the lease in place, uh, like, they can't get the lease prepared until the trucks are built. Due to the fact of all the, uh, work orders and stuff on the trucks, so the lease will be ready till trucks are actually built and delivered. So I just need to get, tell them to go ahead and start the process.
And I remember in a previous meeting, we talked about leasing versus buying. We had that discussion. We decided this was the way to go, so. For anyone listening, that, that was already something that had been discussed.
Yes, this was discussed several months ago and on a discussion meeting. Um, we are still gonna go through the CARB Act in twenty-twenty-seven. It's federally mandated at this point. So, um, I've kind of talked to the builders on what trucks are gonna cost in the near future, like five years from now. Uh, they assured me that they're gonna be well over, just the chassis alone is gonna be well over three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sure.
So everything's just going up in price, cost of doing business, and so I think the. The lease will help us get our material, get our equipment in place to, uh, take care of what can it is.
So my question is the same one I had for Stephanie, time sensitive? Is it time sensitive or, uh, you do need blessings? Okay, back to what we're supposed to be doing here. Is it time sensitive or is this something we can roll over onto the consent agenda? Or how is this, how does this work?
This, would this be just a conversation here to move forward with the purchase of it? Um, you can't do any financing until they're completed.
Yeah, so. I guess the first question is, uh, could you remind us how this particular leasing company was procured?
It was procured, uh, through Sourcewell. Um, this is all Sourcewell. We didn't have to go out for procurement on it. They say these are companies that, or the, the trucking builder company is on Sourcewell with their leases.
Okay.
Everything's on Sourcewell.
Um, so Sourcewell generally, um. Advertises, there are RFPs in the state of Oregon, and the reason that matters is there's a statute, I want to say it's. Two seventy-nine A, two twenty, which describes what public entities need to do if they use an interstate cooperative procurement. And there are two methods that have to be followed. One of them, you follow if the RFP was published in Oregon. The other you follow if the RFP was not published in Oregon. Sourcewell was, as far as I'm aware, always publishes in Oregon, but we should probably double check just to make certain. That we don't screw anything up. So what I might suggest is, let's put this on the agenda for next week. That will give us seven days to, uh, dotterize and cross our Ts. What we have to do, if it was not advertised in Oregon, the county has to publish a notice saying, we intend to use. This interstate cooperative procurement, here's our proposed project, here's what we're spending the money on. Please get us your public comments within seven days. Um, so it's not a burdensome step, and whenever we've done this, I don't recall ever receiving any public comments on these interstate cooperative appearance. Um, but it is something that we have to make sure that we do, if we're gonna use that particular method. Um, so for that reason, I would say let's postpone actually approving this until next week.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm look, I am working with a local dealership, so, uh, if it's brought to your attention, that's everything.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
But Brad, you won't be here next week, right?
Yeah, I won't be here next week.
It'll be on the consent agenda anyway, right, Eric? That's what I'm hearing?
Uh, it's up to you guys.
I, I would say that we just move it to the consent agenda if it meets your requirements and then that's, that's just, it's good.
Okay, and we'll get the process started.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Letter support, Don Isler. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, before you, this letter of support for, uh, NLCG Technical Assistance Grant. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, before you, it's letter of support for, uh, DLCD Technical Assistance Grant. Uh, for us to complete our goal five inventory. Um, and to do the new Eastern Oregon Siding Rules pop and, um, the grant application itself was submitted by the deadline. I think it's October the tenth. Uh, um, I sent this letter in, the letters are required. You have to send the application, and you have to send in, uh, they want to make sure that the, um, governing authority supports the application, so they want a letter of support to deal with the application. I sent this in, uh, but I forgot we had a bi-week. But broadly on this grant, uh, as you guys are probably well aware, our goal five inventory hasn't been updated since it was originally been placed in nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, we tried in early, like, around twenty-ten, um, a very long process, uh, that was ultimately unsuccessful with, um, filled by Sutherland Land Watch, I believe, uh. It hasn't been done in so long, it's very hard, it's very difficult, it's a whole lot of work. Uh, there's a strong chance to get a appeal, and so it's all at a risk. Uh, but I, in my opinion, I think, um, even though it's hard, I don't think we really wait any longer with the growth pressure from Creek County. Um, this is a critical time for us to make sure preserving the things in Creek County that are most important. Um, some, some added benefits to this, in my opinion, are it will allow us to take a stronger look at our aggregate code, uh, to make sure that it represents kind of what the people, um, would like for aggregate, make sure that, you know, they're being responsible producers. Uh, it gives us a chance for this Eastern Oregon siding role. Um, it's not only kind of direct where we want these facilities to go, but that also have the inclusion of there's, uh, community benefits option in there. If we go to this program, if a solar developer, um, wants to decide in Creek County, they need to, there's a lot of freedom with these community benefits we can create. We can create, you know, whatever the people think is in the best interest of Creek County, where the, that, the developer will have to, um, make contributions to the community. There's also agricultural benefits component of it. Um, and so, and I know there's a lot of, uh, built up, I don't know if angst is the right word, but I think people feel like they have a chance to be heard on a lot of these projects, and this will give them a chance over a year and a half to have uh, a lot of public meetings and have their, their opinions, um, documented and influence the direction to go with things. And so, um, I would really appreciate your support on this. I can't guarantee you it's going to work. Um, so in this grant application, I've asked for seventy-five thousand dollars over a, this is, it's really an eighteen-month project that we would, um, get started at the beginning of the year and then finish at the end of fiscal year. Uh, so at the end of June twenty-twenty-seven, um, Anne Byer, another benefit of this is that we keep Anne Byer around. She has, uh, she's excited about this, and so she would be our main.
Why are you, why are you buried in the lead?
Well, she's supposed to be on here. I don't see her up here. She said she was gonna join in. Um, but so the team would mostly be, Anne, are you on there?
She's not.
I don't think she is. She was going to be, she might be busy. So, um, you know, my staff is really busy, and so it's primarily be work done by myself and Anne Byer. And then also Christina said, she is on here. I want to make sure I introduce her. She is a law student at Lewis and Clark. She had originally applied to be on our planning commission, had a report where she was ineligible. She's not a Creek County resident yet. Uh, but when she gets her law degree, she wants to come down and be part of this community. Um, and so I, uh, I broke the news to her, I, um, you know, we're trying to get some way she could contribute, uh, to Creek County, and so she has volunteered, um, her time to be a part of this project, uh, which I think would be great, um, learning experience for her. Uh, and, um, she's smart and she's motivated. I'm excited about her. And so Christine, are you on the phone?
Hi, yeah. Good morning, everybody. Um, yeah, I'm Christina. I'm here. Um, I'm really looking forward to working with Creek County on this project. Um, I have a little bit of experience working in county planning. Um, although I will say it's in the state of New Jersey, which might sound like a foreign country compared to Creek County, but when it comes to resource management, um, Middlesex County, New Jersey and Creek County aren't so different. Um, John has been great so far, really a, a good mentor, and the folks I had a chance to meet last week in the office. Um, were so lovely, and I can't wait to get the ball rolling on this.
So, ready?
I don't know who it is.
Is that Anne?
Maybe it is. See.
We're gonna get jumboed again.
Hello?
Anne, is that you?
It is.
But what are you the owner of?
I don't know. A dog. I don't know. So, thank you, and I'm excited about this project. As, uh, you know, we started Goal Five work back in the early twenty-tens. This is a chance to get updated information available for the public. It's a chance to, um, get some better public participation on these issues that are just critical, so that's a real benefit, and if we can get the state to help fund this, it would be lovely. So appreciate your support. And, um, a thing John mentioned about the community benefits of the new solar project, project. That's something we're seeing at the state level and have implemented in Morrow County. Both community benefits and, um, agricultural mitigation, which Creek County hasn't had to date, so that's a pretty big deal. I also want to note, I'm just always amazed by the range of issues that the county court has to deal with, or county board of commissioners. Um, you all do major work, and I hope um, the folks in Creek County really appreciate the heavy lift that you all do. So thank you. Look forward to this project.
Great, Anne. Thank you. Um, I think the project's in good hands, and we should move forward with it, but John, you and Christina, um, so.
Appreciate it, Commissioner. I'm very excited about it. Um, just, it comes up every day. We, uh, have an application for a private airstrip. The edge of the county up by Smith Rock. Uh, ODFW's first comment was, county needs updates and report. Um, I had a meeting with, uh, Craig Kilpatrick, who's, um, involved in an appeal on a non-farm dwelling just outside Juniper Acres, and one of the main issues is do we apply the wildlife density standard to this, this, to Juniper Acres? And, and nobody knows, because it's, um, you know, the, these were put in place in, in an ordinance, you know, back in two thousand and one, and then we tried to change it, and nobody really knows what we're supposed to be doing, and so, um, huge value to county, um, not just for now, but, you know, twenty, forty years from now, if we pull this off, I think if we can, um, make sure that, uh, we retain what's important in Creek County. So, uh, as I said, I don't guarantee this will work. Um, I don't, uh, I know that DLCD is very eager to give a county money to get the Eastern Oregon Siding Rule opt-in in place. I don't know if other counties have also applied for it. I don't know if you got a chance to read the application, but it's pretty thorough. Uh, and so crossing our fingers, if we don't get the money, we do have, um, some money for a consultant for long-range planning now. Um, through our long-range planning, if you want to think, we'll put it in place. Uh, but we're having to earmark that money in case, um, our federal grant for the Safety Action Plan, Transportation Safety Action Plan doesn't pan out for whatever reason, what's going on in federal government, so we're trying to be cautious there. Uh, the grants will be awarded within sixty and ninety days from the deadline, and so that's gonna be sometime in December, and so, um, and also mainly for Brianna's sake, she's got enough on her plate. My recommendation would be that we approve this today, and get the letter signed and sent out as soon as possible, instead of putting it on next week's consent agenda.
I think it would be foolish if we didn't do this. It would be backwards, and I would be very glad to see Anne back in here. We won't let her read to kindergarteners all the time. She's gotta come work for Creek.
And Christina.
Okay, Anne Christina, Anne Christina, welcome, and thank you very much for your interest and wanting to dive in on to this project.
Yeah, look forward to meeting you one of these days.
Yeah.
I met, I met you when you were here.
Yeah, it's your, it's your last Tuesday. I had, except you met at two for a second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's Christina.
I make.
I thought you were from Washington, not New Jersey.
She lived in New Jersey. She was, she grew up in Washington.
Oh, okay.
Good thing she's out of New Jersey.
I started in California.
Yeah, well, true.
I didn't entertain a motion.
I make a motion to sign today the letter of support for Goal Five Update DLCD Technical Assistant Grant.
Second.
Also maiden second, uh, for the discussion.
No discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
From Rick, aye.
Larnie, aye.
Proper aye.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Anne Christina. Have a great morning.
Yeah, thank you.
We, we are.
Again.
So you're again. So now we get Randy. Randy, the other day I looked at an old application, and by gosh, your name was on it. I just didn't realize you've been around this long.
Yes, yeah, I know.
Okay, yeah, you're an in-teacher. What the heck?
You can say it in high school, Dave.
Yeah, you might be the longest county employee here, pretty soon.
How long have you been here? Cause this, this application was two thousand and five.
Oh, I started in two thousand.
Okay.
Around twenty-five years.
Yeah, your card, so it was, anyway, your card was stapled onto this thing and everything. I'm like, Randy, Randy, I didn't know you were here this long, so. I just want to tell you, I appreciate you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, when, uh, Scott Cooper's there calling, I went to, we sign all my paperwork. And, uh, they're like, oh, you brought your kid into work. And they're like, no, this is our new county employee. Like, I didn't, I didn't have a paper there.
I hope that Ray isn't ever, because of.
Maybe someone is. It's just the job, none of you guys.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for all your work.
You're very welcome. Okay, so update on us at building. I mean, we're running pretty consistent for a normal year, even as of last year. I think last year at this time, it was about five hundred and seventy-three, we're five hundred and seventy-six in this issue. So I mean, we're staying pretty consistent. Again, average year minus the large projects on the hill. Um, currently a hundred and seventy-seven houses under construction, eight hundred and two other type of residential type construction. And three hundred and twenty-six commercial permits active. Last month, we're still, you know, averaging about a thousand inspections a month, so that's a thousand drop site visits. One big update, I would like to talk to you, I don't know if this is a perfect time, but, uh, Rich Evans, I know we've talked about our challenges with staffing. Rich was gonna leave in December, spoke with his wife. He won't, he's able to come back full-time to the job. Or at that point, maybe we would discuss if he wanted any longer time, part-time, or go back to just on-call, we're in the next, next register cycle. But I talked to Amy about this, Rich, cause he was full-time, went to on-call. And, uh, HR was doing good, Rich, getting it full-time. I gotta go talk to Jamie. Um, I know we get a fundraiser, but getting, getting the funding issue. I just didn't know, well, is that something that uh, we bring back to you?
No, yeah, we, we can, we can work that out internal.
Yeah, it's sort of, yeah. It's, so Rich's got, is A-level electrical, so we're not losing that. Uh, he's got fire suppression, which with our Jeff out. Um, you know, we're, we're leaving out commercial fire suppression, so. Um, we've got Bodie Training for Fire Suppression, James for Fire Life Safety. And then we actually just put, uh, also a big update is Ashley Leslie, our senior commit there. We got her enrolled in the state class of the government inspector, planned exam. We're not gonna utilize her in that capacity, but, um, the state had a couple seats booked, and they gave us some priority. And so we got her, she starts out November fourth, got a six-eight young process for testing. Um, she's still considered a best. So, yeah, trying to get some, uh, certs in the wings and, uh, staff in the wings for the next phase of transition to run out the next year. Interest is going down again, so hopefully all. Yeah. Any questions from you guys?
Thank you, Randy. All right, on the, uh, my side of things, it's, um, kind of just humming along, uh, the numbers on the planning side a little bit compared to last year, but, um, we're still up near the date. Uh, the workflows has been manageable, we're kind of getting into a groove with things, um. And so we had twenty-three applications in September, eighty-five year dates. Some of the kind of notable stuff going on, we have that Bishara Hellview Zone change. Um, I think the second hearing comes before you guys. Uh, the ordinance, um, the next county court meeting, or commission meeting, the Bobby Community Child Center. Um, I know you guys have gotten some calls on that, uh, so that was, uh, signed last Wednesday, I believe, and so um, we're still within the appeal period on that, and I want to make sure you guys know the county followed all their required procedures on that, and we went through the process we're supposed to go through. We got fellow testimony. Um, the planning commission had to make a decision. They made their decision based on the standard criteria. Uh, I think a lot of the angst, um, is that some of the community members were expecting, uh, greater messaging from the community center itself on what their plans were, since it's their property. Um, I think that is gonna let some of the issues that people feel like they weren't able to, to beat are. Um, but we did all notice them like we're supposed to, and so those did participate, you have a chance to appeal if they want to. Uh, TSP is done. Um, I think the appeal period is run on that, so that is over. Congratulations for appeal. Uh, added, uh, Chris McCruff, it sounds like there might be an angle here that they're working to get that, the public lands. Um, even though there's some deadlock, if you see, we've done a report of that, and so that's exciting. Um, I'll let you know, I've been having some frank discussions with, uh, RMG, who's the hidden canyon developer of the MOA for the road improvements at Hellview one twenty-six. Um, and so they're putting their heads together, trying to figure out if we can amend things to get that even quicker. Um, I'm gonna keep working on that all the time. Um, uh, the Moffitt Solar Facility was approved by the planning commission last week. I think they're gonna sign tonight. Um, that's over by Gala of Milliken, kind of out of the way. Um, one of the better spots for one of these. The airstrip is the one that I told you, ODFW, you had comments about our coverage of plan. We're having the, the final hearing on that tonight. Uh, code updates, we have a whole bunch of code updates coming in December. Um, we have a work session tonight on, um, trying to help, uh, draw the line between what is a dwelling unit and what's an accessory structure. That's, I know, I told you guys before, that's been a longstanding issue in Creek County. People build these accessory structures, they turn into dwellings, and so we're trying to find a, uh, trying to find an elegant, clean and easy way to make clear, uh, and, and easy for people to know what they can get approved and what they can't get approved, and make sure that they're held to those standards. That'll be tonight. Um, also, during the last-minute addition code update to, um, our compliance fines, where that, that money goes, it's, there's an outdated section there, so that all goes to the county court. Uh, to pay fees, I mean, the circuit court to pay fees, and then, but that's not how the process works anymore, so just have a nice little fix on that to make sure that, especially not at the beginning, um, check aggregate producers that are out of compliance, um, that works. Uh, the Central Oregon Field, the non-farm dwelling over in Juniper Acres, uh, I told you about that as well. Um, and then we have the Verizon Tower over in Hellview. We're already getting a ton of public comment on this. This was supposed to be, um, typically it's a good administrative decision, but I'm sending it to the planning commission, so everybody can be heard. Um, it's weird, so the applicant's agent, um, in the weeds, but, um, has left the company. I'm, I'm trying to figure out who's in charge of this application now, but so it might be December, we might have to kick that down the road a little bit. Uh, notable city land use applications, you guys are very well familiar with the best care appeal. I think that's gonna be heard yet November fourth. They have also finished their TSP, and so both the city and county's transportation systems plans are very up-to-date and current. Uh, they're going through a new economic opportunity analysis, which, um, I believe will be in their growth boundary, and then, um, a couple subdivisions of an iron horse and housing developments, uh, at the early stages. On-site, still chugging along, um, up over month to month, about even, year-to-date, uh, fiscal year-to-date up quite a bit. Um, really impressed with that side of, uh, my team. Kirsten Julie just cranked away, and then hardly did any help at all. Um, finally getting the IGA with Jefferson County updated, so, uh, we are compensated appropriately for the work that he's been doing up there. Uh, code compliance, uh, really enjoy working with Louis. He's doing a great job. We're, you know, communicating almost every day on certain things. Um, we had a talk yesterday with, uh, Crook Creek, um, they got a, one of our notice of violations, a kind of a complicated situation. Turns out they they didn't really wrong, but they were, they came to meet us, and they, we had a long talk, and it was good to have them at the table and, um, talk to them. But I didn't join me on our Goal Five update when the time comes. It's one of our, um, public action committee members, and so, um, just wanna appreciate the work that Louis does every day. Works really hard and does a really good job. Um, that is our update. Are there any questions?
No, I did, uh, get an atta voice for you, and hopefully you'll get a call from the water contamination people about your letter. How well you wrote it and how impressed they were with you. And I said, don't tell me, tell John. He's the one that wrote it. So I'm hoping that they go ahead and tell you that.
I forgot to bring that up, and I thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. I actually did. I, I spoke to Big Zermy on the phone yesterday, obviously he appreciated me. I I forgot to bring that up, and I thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner, I actually did, I I spoke to Big Zermy on the phone yesterday, obviously appreciated me, I did. It was very nice to be appreciated.
No, no, and that was my comment, is don't, don't, don't make me be the messenger you called, so I'm very glad they called.
That is an important issue, so I would have let it do dogami, um, trying to get some clarification on uh, their interpretation of certain provisions of the Woodward conditional use permit. As uh, Night River has applied for an imported fill plan. To basically bring rock from outside the area, or outside the site at least, to the Woodward site to be washed. Um, do you guys know, it's a very complicated situation with those seven ponds on the F U ground and the way the whole thing is worded and the C E P and what it's actually supposed to mean? And so uh, dogami should be getting back to me maybe this week, but next week. Their top people putting their heads together on how to respond to my letter. Um, Matt Rock and Night River, we just got yesterday, he wants to meet up again about their plans in Cook County, and so um. A lot of that happens behind the scenes, um, all the time, and it's still moving forward and. One of these days, I think we're going to get to a place where this isn't um, an issue for people today, so, but thank you, Commissioner.
We've got the three inspectors all week, so if you hear anything, we're trying to manage. We have four guys out all the time, so. Yep.
You sound like the road department.
A little incident, you know, we're just trying to chug along. Very good, you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Keep it up.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hey. Okay, so I guess it's April, I need you to go ahead. Jumping in.
Okay, let's uh, go into uh, O D A grasshopper crimes.
So I talked about this at four different commissioner updates, most recently was on June twenty-fifth. At that time, I said the county was going to be awarded a hundred and eight thousand dollars towards grasshopper mitigation. And the grasshoppers basically came from Grant and Harney, or in the eastern part of Cook County. We received ninety thousand because at the last moment, Malheur County. Decided they needed some money, Dartmouth, so we didn't receive a hundred and eight, we received ninety thousand dollars. We went ahead and sprayed, it was very effective. In the meetings, we had quite a few ranches involved. But because the eastern more ranches were aggressive, and we got it done at the first nemesis, which is the cheaper way to do it. We were able to kind of stop it, so even though it was a public process and it didn't go out to all the ranches, the ranches involved uh, were there. Helena Chemical Company handled the pilot and everything, and so the reflected, if you look there at the distribution of the grant funds. That was handled by a third party, Helena Corporation, they were the ones that mapped the things. We did not spend all of the money because we felt it was prudent to save money, because this is kind of a last. Type of getting money, so as we, if you look at it, we spent fifty-nine thousand, so we have, I'm just going to say thirty thousand to make it left. And we chose to do that because it enables us to, if we need to have surveys, or next year, we have the funding to do that. So basically, what you see here is the cost and the acreage that was submitted by Helena. And I have a conflict of interest because I'm one of the ranches that was right in the middle, which of course, if I didn't participate, that was going to be bad also. So I'm announcing that I will not be participating in any discussion, debate, or voting on Cook County's. Twenty twenty-five grant from the Oregon Department of Agriculture regarding grasshoppers and Mormon, crickets, I wonder why they're Mormon. The grant funds are meant to assist the general public with mitigating the impact of these insects. Herman Fever Creek Ranch L L C, of which I am a member and manager, will be applying for the grant funds on the same terms and conditions. As all other qualified members of the public, my refusal will include but not be limited to discussions on how the county will establish the criteria for distribution of grant funds. The amount and timing of any distributions to applicants, or the submission of reports on behalf of the county to the Department of Ag. Recording are regarding the grant. I ask at this statement included in minutes at today's meeting. Now, do I need to get up and leave?
Uh, if this was the regular. Or you would, on the dais, I would recommend that you would, uh, because we're in sort of a work session, and it's more casual environment, I don't think you need to necessarily leave the room.
Okay, but I'm blacked out. Just pretend I'm I'm not here, okay?
And and uh, remember that this kind of recusal is not just to protect the counties, also to protect Susan herself. So please, if you have discussions, don't involve her, don't look at her, don't make gestures to her, that's to help her.
Yeah.
So the next uh, order of business on this, I reviewed the contract, I have any questions, we've seen it, we've talked about it. Um, I am now seeing the uh, copy of the invoice, and the parties that will be paid, the amount of that will be paid. I don't have any problems with that. So should we authorize our finance department to do, because they are the ones that are managing this thing?
Yeah, so the first thing I suggest, and this is probably overzealous, but a little um, effort at this juncture might help prevent some headaches in the future. Is a formal motion to ratify the execution of the Department of Agriculture grant. Um.
Does it have to be done now, a little close to next meeting?
It does not have to be done now, uh, but I wouldn't put it out past next meeting. So.
Then I'll have to leave the room.
Can we, can we not? May I have this down today?
I guess I'm, I'm okay either way, I just. We talked about it, so. Yeah, I'm.
Okay, so then what I might suggest is a motion to ratify the execution of the Department of Agriculture two thousand and twenty-five grant. Grant number G H M C dash two dash two thousand and twenty-five.
The move, second. Motion made seconded, um, in the third discussion. And then all the papers say, all right. All right. So, so move from Commissioner Crawford Department.
So, um. Yes, then the next question is, as I said, discussion about. You two as to how these grant funds would be distributed, um, if there has been any sort of statement or commitment made to the potentially qualifying. Uh, ranchers, uh, you know, that should be brought to your attention, I'm unaware of anything. You have in the packet. A chart here which shows the amount of acreage and the compensation rate, which as I understand it is six dollars per acre. Um, and you have a range of acreages from about seventeen hundred down to about four hundred, so there's a broad range. Everyone get the same rate. Um. But I don't know if that has been formally uh, discussed or approved. You could, if you want, uh, just delegate authority to the finance office, so you're comfortable, say. Figure out how to fairly get this uh, these grant funds to qualifying ranchers. Uh, but if you wanted to have some discussion about how that money is going to be distributed now's the time.
Wouldn't the money just go to Helena, and then that be spread amongst the other? Ranchers, I mean, it sounds like it's a third party.
I don't know what Helen, how Helena has invoiced, telling the invoicing to each, according to the acres that they have on record that they paid. So I would assume that. That Helena. They have already reimbursed them, I guess. Or in the process of reimbursing.
Got it, so they, they contracted with Helena, Helena did the work. Now they're, now we're reimbursing the rancher to then pay Helena, yes, okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, I guess whatever they would turn in that. Do they turn that into the count?
I think that they have a, they should have a copy of the invoice from from Helena, and I would suggest that they turn in a copy of the invoice for that, and that would uh. Actually speak for the acreage here. It will be sufficient.
Yeah, that's fine, just maybe return in that to the, I bet it sounds to me like we can just find it.
Yeah.
Figure that out, if it's that kind of drive. I don't think we need to. Fill out exactly how.
No, I just, I recommend you might think that could. No one needs to be there. So we would give them motion then to. Authorize the finance department.
Yeah, so um, so we did it on the record, there's been a discussion about how this money would be distributed, and one sort of documentation to do for the county. Show that it is due under this grant. Um, so what I think you can do is you can direct the finance office uh, to implement that system as it was discussed today.
So move, second, motion made seconded, and you put a discussion. And then hearing all the papers say, all right. All right. Barney Crawford, I, Susan, then both.
Didn't she technically abstain?
Yeah, I think we'll memorialize on the minutes that for those motions that. She did recuse herself, she's abstaining, she's not voting, she's not participating, she's not here. She is, she is hiding her face.
Sorry for your butt coat on.
Yes.
I'm going to have a chart over here.
Okay, Eric, are you comfortable with all that, your case?
Go for it. This is.
No, I think um. That solves the issues that we have in uh, the grant agreement, uh, sections two point one and. Uh, two point three, thirteen, three point one. Um, if there are any sort of complications with that kind of arrangement, I'm sure the finance office uh, will come back and say, here's what we need. In addition to that, I'm unaware of anything more we need, um, you know, Susan made the the statement, so she's. Going to recuse herself, uh, her grant, or excuse me, her ranch is one of the potentially interested firms, um, but the ranchers, um. Uh, again, uh, none of the ranchers are going to get any sort of additional or supplementary benefit from this, it's all on a per acre basis. Um, so it's open to the general public. And she's thinking to make use of it under those same terms.
Well, their danger depends on usually the grant that are stolen custody.
So at some juncture, there'll probably need to be some discussion about what to do with um, the remaining grant funds at the June twenty-fifth. Work session where this program was discussed, uh, there was um, on the record, a statement that the Department of Agriculture has politely asked. That the county spent all the money if it was reasonably possible, because they don't want any of it returned, they want it used. Um, so of course, the county can't just be profligate, but also the request from O D A is um, that we do use that money um, for the benefits of the general public.
Sounds good. All right, moving along, uh, landfill update manager.
Yeah, so um, I I don't have um, an extensive update from the board today, I did just want to note that with the packet. Today, there is a quarterly update from the landfill. Vision there is just to get the information in front of you, if there's ever any questions about it, I know Jackie's having to come down, but on a quarterly basis, those reports will be. Attached to my manager's report, and in the case of the landfill, there's some information about, you know, some of the, some of the successes from the last quarter, some of the challenges. What's coming up in the new quarter, as well as some, some, some high level kind of budget information in terms of where we are with everything. Um. So I just, just kind of a heads up that going forward, you'll see those kind of on a quarterly basis attached to my manager's reports, and they're, they're there for your review, and and we can always follow up with. Um. More of a conversation, that would be helpful. Um, that's all I, all I have for you guys this morning.
I just want to call out Jackie and the good job she does, and how lucky we are to have her. Thank you, Jackie.
Totally agree with that. Thank you. Commissioner updates?
Oh, you go first or me?
Either way.
So uh, SNAP, because of the government shutdown, SNAP program is going to be ending on October thirty-first. One in six Argonians participate in SNAP, which is seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand Argonians, four hundred and fifty thousand households. And it uh, they will, like I say, delay issuing, if you do have an E V T card and there is surplus money on it. That will still be able to be used, there just won't be any more money credited. And when we're looking at, and I I participated in a Zoom thing about SNAP. When they came up with these figures, nothing specific Cook County, this was Oregon, the entire state of Oregon. But Argonian benefits lost or reduced will be four hundred and twenty-five million dollars. The state's share of administrative cost increases is ninety-five million. And states may be required to partially fund this, and if they are required, it will cost Oregon four hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. So that's just a kind of a little brief recap of uh. Of the thing, so as you look, what does it all really mean? Whole communities of people admitted as refugees, asylees, or victims of human trafficking will lose SNAP. A sixty-three-year-old will be limited to three SNAP months in three years if they don't meet work rules. Residents of remote rural counties must work eighty hours per month, or be limited to three SNAP months in three years. And people and families who have SNAP will lose SNAP or get fewer benefits. So as the way as it was explained to me. Eighteen between sixty-four, if you are able to work and you don't have a dependent under the age of five years old living in your home. You must fulfill the requirement either working twenty hours a week, volunteering twenty hours a week. Or going to continuing education and being, uh, what do I want to say? Trying to be trained to be able to go to work. So those are the new uh, objectives of our SNAP program.
Seems like a positive.
Actually, the gal from the Department of Human Services, she state, and this is, this is on another level. This is on a community Cook County meeting, not on on this Zoom call that was the state of Oregon. She said that we do have people, that quite frankly, getting them out, getting them working, getting them volunteering would be a great thing for them to, to do work ethic. For pride, for a lot of different reasons, so this isn't, even though it's going to be quite upsetting on November first. There are people that these new things will definitely benefit.
True.
That's it.
Um, I got an email yesterday, I can forward it on to you guys, but we've talked about it quite a bit, this um. This is again, the E P A.
Oh, the um, the FEMA.
The FEMA buy-off. Um, it's not looking like the Trump administration is going to fix it for Oregon, they're going to probably do some kind of a national fix. But there's still a lot, a lot of liability here in Oregon. And there's an organization that's starting up that wants to push back against that. Um, I can get the name for us, but I think it would be worthwhile for us, it's not a. Lawsuit or something where it's ongoing, but they're looking for about five thousand dollars from the county. To step up, I was going to call the city and have them match what we do as well, because I think it means a lot for our economy locally. And our citizens in the city and the county, probably more in the city, but there's still county residents. And I think it's worthwhile to step up and and put some money towards that, I don't know if that's, I I think Will can probably find. Where that money best comes from in the county, maybe even the community development. Because there's, no, you got nothing.
Good thing you're here, John, you fight for your money, or you wouldn't have tried to take.
But you know, I mean, I think that's something that that's going to take a lot of time out of planning, if that goes through, and there's a lot of additional requirements for going through that process. It could really run into a halt for our citizens, and so. I'm not saying it has to come from there, I'm just saying, you know, I know we're tight on money, but I think we also have to continue to push back against federal overreach, and. Um, I think that's one of the most important things we can do as a county, so. Um, I I wouldn't, we don't have to make a decision today, but I I would like to put that on potentially the consent agenda for next.
My question is, so is it five thousand total, so it'll be twenty-five hundred from us, twenty-five from the city, five and five?
Five and five.
Okay, that was, that's my only question.
Yeah. And I just, it just got to me very recently, but they are in somewhat of a hurry to, to get the lawsuit, they've, they've hired an attorney out of Washington. Who was successful in stopping it in Washington. And so she, the the woman has a track record of of being successful in this, so it's not just kind of a win.
So are you going to go to Primeville City Council to ask, is that what your job, what you're going to do?
Yeah, I mean, I I may not actually go to the council, but I will have a conversation with the city, and if I need to go to council, I'm happy.
Okay, that would be my only question, is how do we get them to buy?
I I will, I will pursue them bigger, so.
Could we, this is kind of a land use.
Always trying to get it, yeah, John.
Well, actually, what I would like to see. Before we just write five thousand, is that like, I will come out.
Before we just write five thousand is that I'd like to have a little bit of work come out. Yeah, it was a, uh, show the problem and uh, who we're sending the money to and what they're going to do. Rather than this, I don't, because I don't know from the anyone.
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly, I mean, I'm happy to share the information I received, but I know that, you know, John has been working on this. And it is definitely a big issue coming down the line. But yeah, I think it's, it makes a lot of sense to.
We did just submit a comment letters.
Yeah.
We passed it on.
Would you, so? Would, would John be writing a memo? I mean, who's going to?
I, I'll volunteer to do the memo. I can work at our finance department to figure out how to take the money from community. But uh, no, I'll, we'll, we'll take a, we'll take a look at the whole picture, figure out what makes. Where it makes sense. It is.
Yeah, so. You know, we, um, have, well, if you have any questions, or, or guys, obviously, um.
You two guys can work.
We can work together to get the, the memo out.
That'd be great.
You need to change the combination on the ball.
I tried when you brought it up, you weren't here.
Hey, but we're not putting it on consent yet.
I, I think. I think we'd probably want to have a quick conversation about where the money's coming from.
Okay, that's fine, then, yeah, I'm, I'm fine, we'll be in discussion.
And then you probably would know way more about the city because that gives you the time. To go to the city and see how they need to do it, and that might be even better.
Totally.
Here today. Uh, you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Um, I don't, uh, Will and I went to a core. And opened house yesterday, uh, within the two in the site, but where the city is going to be. Um. It's interesting. Um, and I had a round game of conversation and. There's not a lot of funding available. And it sounds like the state's going to be down about a billion dollars here pretty shortly, but I haven't already made up. So there's not a lot of funding available for the project, but they do have funds, uh, for some of this. If you keep going, it's a good project. It's better, be the phone. You have anything else to add?
No, I, I think. Um, not only is there a need for funding for construction over however many years, construction may take, but the, the conversation about how to, how to fund the operation. Of, of course, really, and I think that's something the county needs to, needs to stay engaged in, um, via, be willing to participate in terms of making sure that it's equitable for. To our community and our, our taxpayers.
Yeah. Rest of the group was very, yes, great, big concerns as we all knew. Now it's going to be financed in the future. So as it comes in. Which are advanced budgets. In compression years.
Okay, back, and I'm, I'm going to come back again, back at a board of commissioners meeting, which I, I am not sure exactly what date. We went ahead and okayed financial support in the amount of two thousand and sixty dollars. To offset the community development application fees for a partition. Creating the two-acre parcel on McKay Creek Road. The proposed parcel is going to be the new Ocho irrigation district pumping station. For the seasonal retreat distribution of irrigation waters along McKay Creek. So I guess my question now is, do we need, and I know Brian has to recuse himself, do we need a motion that we can go ahead? And pay this funding? This has already been okayed at the board commissioners meeting. I can't remember.
Hold on, Commissioner Hermick, you guys made a motion on the July thirtieth meeting to approve that amount of money out of the community fund. Katrina and I worked together and it is taken care of.
It is taken care of, okay.
So our, our fees raised a little bit, the fiscal year, but Craig covered the, the difference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like a hundred and sixty.
Okay, I was told that it hadn't been, so I wanted to bring that up in case we needed to do something. Perfect.
And I talked to Craig yesterday.
Perfect.
And everything's good.
Perfect, yeah. That was something you had brought to my attention, so thank you for following through. Okay.
All right, uh, there's no agreement session. So motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait a second, in discussion. Remove all, Jamie, say hi.
Hi, or did we have more public?
Oh, yeah, do we need?
You're just here. Just here to warm up?
Right.
Thank you for coming and listening to us.